Good evening. This is the Lower Makefield Township Planning Commission meeting on November 30, 2020. All members are present. First item is to call the order, and as I said, all members are present. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes. From the... Can you hear me okay, or is there feedback?
I'm hearing a little echo, but I can hear you.
Okay. Not sure if it's me or what it is, but first item is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was November 9. Has everyone had not, or have the board members had an opportunity to review them? And do you have any comments, edits concerning those minutes?
I've reviewed, no comments, no edits.
I've reviewed, no comments, no edits.
Okay, thank you. So is it, do I have, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 9.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Our next item on our agenda, which is primarily, our only other item on the agenda this evening, is the Morrisville Borough Master Plan. We've been asked to provide comments to Morrisville as it relates to Lower Makefield. They have sought our input. I think it's also perhaps an opportunity, to the extent we reviewed this and thought of things that maybe should be brought to our own township's attention, maybe we do that as well as we're going through this. Although that's not the primary purpose of this being on the agenda this evening. Andy, you had provided comments. I don't think anybody else had provided any written comments. So perhaps that's the best place to start with Andy's comments. If you can walk us through those, and if you don't mind, as board members have questions of you or comments about your comments or the sections that you've highlighted, maybe we can raise them at that time. And then when we're done with that, if there are any other comments about any other aspect of the master plan, perhaps we can address them then.
Okay, sure. The, some of the comments and changes that Morrisville Borough had, I guess, highlighted in their comprehensive plan. The first item, first comment that we had was regarding zoning. They were proposing a comprehensive zoning ordinance update. And particularly, they want to create a downtown zoning district and a riparian buffer zone. So the riparian buffer zone would be along the river. Downtown zoning district, I don't have the exact limits to it, but I think that what they're aiming for there is a more urban type of zoning for their downtown area.
And if you'd like, I could share what the zoning map that they have looks like, if you'd like.
Jim, I think that'd be very helpful.
And you see the zoning map, Lower Makefield is at the top of the map, the Delaware River is on the right side or the east side of Morrisville Borough. And currently, their zoning is as shown. Most of the areas adjoining Lower Makefield Township are residential and neighborhood and nature. There is the area, the gray stones area, which they've preserved as a nature preserve in Morrisville Borough. That's the green area adjoining Lower Makefield along River Road and the canal on both sides.
And maybe it would help if Andy, if you could at least point out where the proposed riparian buffer zone is? And does that come up to where Morrisville meets Lower Makefield?
Yeah, if I, I have to go into the comprehensive plan to determine exactly the limits.
Yeah, I believe the limits were proposed to be along the Delaware River. Sort of to have a little bit of a buffer along the river and possibly along the canal, from that.
Yeah, I mean, with the, with the area, the gray stones, that's already a naturally preserved area. I don't know that there would be much of a change because it seems like a majority of that area is already a natural buffer. And so I don't think that the revisions would be much within that area.
Okay. Any board members have any comments about, I guess that's item one on Andy's list? Andy, you want to keep going?
Sure. So item number two would be to create a boat launch owned by the Morrisville Municipal Authority in Lower Makefield Township.
Now, right, there's nothing there right now, correct?
Isn't, isn't there a launch right there, right now? Again, let me pull up the particular page of the comprehensive plan to...
Looks like an informal launch almost, right now.
Yeah, people pull up and back up their trailer and let people out right there.
I mean, it's not clear when you drive by that, that's owned by, that's publicly owned, or who owns it?
Yeah, I know, I, it's in Lower Makefield. I thought it was ours. I thought we just had a second one. Oh, unless that's Yardley Borough, the first, the other one, but...
It's on River Road, about 425 feet north of the border of Morrisville Borough. And Lower Makefield Township is an existing boat canoe kayak launch on the property owned by the Morrisville Municipal Authority. The borough residents can access. The launch is located opposite the intersection of East Ferry Road and River Road.
Yep, I took, I took the, what they were proposing to me, and they were going to make improvements and create better access on this river walk path they kept talking about. And, and that, that's all they were doing. They were just going to improve it and connect it better. That was a great crossover.
Right, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what it says is, "Work with PennDOT and Lower Makefield Township to provide a safe crossing of River Road to the boat launch area."
I guess, just before we move on from that, I think that, you know, to the extent that it's a publicly owned, whether it's Morrisville or Lower Makefield, and it happens to be in Lower Makefield, it should probably be better marked than it is now. Maybe we recommend that it's identified as what it is. Better, maybe some signage there. And that, are you saying it's only accessible to Morrisville residents, or is it open to the public at large?
It doesn't say.
It would seem that if it's open to the public, it's open to the entire public, not just Morrisville residents.
Yeah. Yeah, legally, I'm not sure how that all works. I just know that people just pull up there, they back their boat down and launch it basically, and I'm not sure where they go park the trailers afterward, but...
Jim, I would assume, wouldn't that be working the same way as the township's boat launch off of River Road works?
Well, the one off of River Road is a more formal one. They actually have a paved parking area. And they even have a restroom facility, a portable one there. And it's more of a formal boat launch. This is more informal. It's more like a little gravel sort of driveway to back on down and get in, if I recall correctly.
All right. Yeah, and that's my read on this whole thing, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, was they're going to take that and probably my read was they're going to make it more formal, create more pedestrian, and just create, make it more accessible. The signage point is a good point. And the, the point about it being accessible to Morrisville residents, I think, I interpreted that to mean, even though it's in Lower Makefield Township, it is a, it is something that is open to residents of Morrisville, not just Lower Makefield.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And, and looking at it on Google Earth, there is a boat launch area, but then there's a gravel area that probably... They can probably fit five cars to the south and maybe five more cars to the north of the boat launch area. So there is a gravel spot that people can pull over and park.
If, if it is publicly accessible, what type of liability exposure does LMT have? If, if there were an accident or if there were some, depending on what they're building out, worst case scenario.
It's owned by Morrisville Municipal Authority, so they should have the necessary insurance coverage to provide for that.
Also, PennDOT, the River Road is the PennDOT Road in that location, I believe.
Yeah, so I don't think the township really would have any authority, I mean, any liability. I can't stop anybody from trying to sue the township, but at the end of the day, information would be provided that it's owned by the Morrisville Authority as well as being a PennDOT Road, so.
Tony, that reinforces your point, or Adrian, I'm sorry, I forget who said it, about signage, just so that's properly marked.
Because I, I don't think there's anything there right now.
It, it doesn't appear to be any, there doesn't appear to be any signage on Google Earth. This imagery is dated August 2019. So if we're ready to move on.
Yes, I think so.
Then the next item. The, the trail at the towpath will be brought up and across Bridge Street near Mill Pond. Design plans are being finalized. Construction funding has been secured for that. So this is a part of the towpath trail. They're, they're looking at a better connectivity, better crossing at Bridge Street.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's the last place on the towpath between Bristol and Easton that has to be dealt with in terms of a road crossing.
I believe you are correct.
Yeah, currently, it's... I, I think there's steps up to the bridge. There's a there's a curb, so there's no kind of adequate, adequate crossing. So I think that that's something that the township would benefit, the township for connectivity to the trails.
And Andy, correct me if I'm not wrong, but because it is the canal towpath that's owned by DCNR, the state would have full oversight of the revitalization and reconstruction plans for that section, correct?
Yeah, they might even be paying, they might even be paying for some of it. I'm not sure how they obtained construction funding off the top of my head here, but typically grants are obtained for that type of work.
Yeah, but, but what I was saying is the state's going to have direct oversight as to how this is being accomplished.
Yes.
Anyone have any comments about, further comments about this item? Okay, maybe Andy, if we could move on to the next one?
Yes, the next one is the establishment of Williamson Park Town Square. So a concept plan that has received favorable support from the council will turn Williamson Park into a mixed-use development featuring amphitheater, four luxury apartment buildings, a hotel, several retail shops, restaurants, 22,000 square foot grocery store, urgent care, and a bank. So Williamson Park is located along the river. Well, not, not immediately along the river. It is...
Immediately along the river. It's just north of the bridge over in the Trenton. If you look at the screen, it's green area. You have the little U-shaped road in here with the lots. And Williamson Park is this area in here, and they plan to develop that area, which is adjacent to their downtown and the bridge, and turn that into a commercial area. Currently, it's a park with ball fields and some other stuff. And I believe they're looking at ways to possibly relocate those baseball field facilities to another location if they can to enable that development. It's a pretty far away from Lower Makefield. It's probably the nearest point, maybe half a mile away.
So yeah, it's to me, and like the direct impact to Lower Make is just, I think that's where Morrisville Little League plays and the impact on our overcrowded fields, at least what I'm telling you. And, and if they don't replace those fields, what does that mean for the usage of our fields in Lower Makefield?
Adrian, that's a good point, and I think that's actually something more that is not for Morrisville, but is for LMT. And it gets back to an issue of whether or not the fields are truly overcrowded or not, the baseball fields. You know, I think there's 50% more baseball fields in Lower Makefield than there were 15 years ago, and 50% fewer kids. It's a little miss, in the league, and I think it's a little misleading because they no longer use the school fields. So that's, if there's overcrowding, they could be, they could use school fields as they used to use. I think, and I think the other thing to keep in mind is Morrisville Little League has a significant percentage of Lower Makefield residents in it. I don't know exactly what that percentage is, but it's significant. So if there, if Morrisville does go ahead with developing Williamson Park, probably Lower Makefield Park and Rec should start talking to Morrisville Little League about accommodations that can be made for using township fields and when and how.
Is it definite that they won't be replacing the fields? Are we locating the fields?
Not, no, I think, and there, there were other line items in the document that said, I think they were planning on trying to put fields in other places, maybe more at the high school or whatever. I just, you know, it's just unclear, and that's why I was just raising the point that as they do this, that is the one thing that jumped out at me from a Lower Makefield standpoint is we ought to at least pay attention and be communication with them to make sure there's no issues down the road.
I, I totally agree with you, Adrian, and just, I've seen on Facebook already the LMT residents who are in Morrisville Little League are already making sort of coalescing around this issue.
Yeah, and the issue with Little League, they use the smaller fields, so, you know, being at Stoddart, there's only three of those fields available right now for that size, so. But that'd be some of our plans in place then if they do decide to start to use our facilities.
Yep. All true.
All right, it's definitely something that us in Lower Makefield, it sounds like probably maybe starting through Parks and Rec or somewhere at township, should be on top of and should understand some, somehow, the implications of it to make sure we don't get into an issue, if, if and when this project starts.
And the other item about this project is, at least from the press account I read, is fairly substantial. It's, it's $150 million project. So what kind of traffic does that put on the roads coming towards Lower Makefield to and from, if any additional traffic, and does that affect our roads that border Morrisville?
That, that's a fair point, too. The more, the more we do things to build up with some of the things that are driving people to go into Yardley Borough, you know, we're, two weeks ago, we talked about a new shopping center over on Township Line Road, you know. So there, there, if there's a significant amount, number of more people in Morrisville, it's potential for significant more traffic using the resources that are over in Yardley Borough and, and Lower Make and Newtown.
Just a point of order here, Jim, or Barbara. So with these comments, how are we going to be moving forward with this? Do you, do you want me to draft up a letter of the, of these comments? Or how do you want to handle it, Jim?
At the end of this meeting, the Planning Commission will need to decide which comments they'd like to forward to the Morrisville Borough Planning Commission. So far, the only comment I've really heard that is sort of decided on is something about signage being properly marked for the boat launch. And then the other stuff is just sort of informational discussion. I don't know that we have any specific comments for Morrisville Borough. And if they get to that point, then the board will need to make a motion.
Okay. So then the next item, the comment that I had was related to the last item in that open space parcel at the intersection of South Delmore Avenue and East Philadelphia Avenue will be developed into a park. So that's about eight acres. The Williamson Park is about 40 acres. So there, it's not necessarily a one-to-one swap.
Go on to the next one?
Moving, yeah, moving on. Discussion of Morrisville Wastewater Treatment Plant. Plans to relocate the Borough's water treatment plant to the Keystone Industrial Port. plans to relocate the borough's water treatment plant to the Keystone Industrial Port Complex, which is a brownfield site and about three miles down from the current facility, three miles downhill. Plan recommends that a joint Act 537 plan be prepared with Lower Makefield Yardley and Falls Township.
And before gentlemen, everybody gets too wrapped up in this, couple of things that you need to know. First of all, Morrisville, I'm not even sure, has secured the site. There was a lot of discussion back and forth by Morrisville Municipal Authority about relocation. So the water treatment plant being moved is a new i- item right now. And secondly, not sure how the Act 537 plan would be impacted since our sewer system is presently being authorized to be sold. And as I understand, the Act 537 plan is one usually prepared with the township's sewer authority and sewer engineer. So this may not come into fruition at this point, and if it does, it probably won't involve the township, but whoever is the owner of our existing sewer system.
Next item involves stormwater. They are proposing a levee study. It's in draft phase. A spillway project is under consideration, including a pump station behind the levee to pump water from the canal back into the river. So this is really just kind of to address areas down by Williamson Park that they currently have problems with flooding down there. And with the current levee, once the water breaches it, it has no way of getting back into the river once the the river water subsides. And so this would be installing pump stations in order to pump the water back into the Delaware River.
But that would only be into effect then once the river would go down is when those pumps would then activate?
Well, theoretically, they they would activate, you know, once once the floodwaters start reaching them.
And if I may, a part of the plan that's been discussed for over probably 15 years now is that along the Delaware Canal, sometimes there's flooding that happens from the canal. And that's because it fills up because it's partially fed not only from way upstream, but also through all the streams that flow into it. And that that sometimes creates flooding. It creates backups even in Lower Makefield. And there was talk about putting a spillway in just north of the Calhoun Street Bridge to allow the canal to be drained down in advance of a flood. So it act more like a giant detention basin, which would alleviate flooding in Morrisville Borough. It would also help alleviate flooding somewhat in Lower Makefield Township in that you wouldn't have to worry about flooding coming back up from the canal. You just have to worry about the river. So this idea has been bandied about for 10 or 15 years from now. And I know it's still on Morrisville's radar to do it. And I'm pretty sure that Lower Makefield would be strongly supportive of it as they have been in the past.
Okay, moving on.
Before we move on, if we could just go back to number six for a minute. Because I think we kind of left that a little bit dangling with Barbara's comment. I I think we could make a recommendation that conforms to Barbara's comment that essentially is that, you know, it may not be Lower Makefield, that it may be the buyer of the sewer system. And that we should let, you know, I'm sure they know this, but we should writing to them. I think it's
I don't know if we need to, because there's been a lot going on between the township and Morrisville Municipal Authority, all of whom I believe have reported to Morrisville. I guess Borough Council of what's going on. So I think everybody is fully aware of the situation.
So given that understanding, we should comment that the, I I think we should comment that
The joint Act 537 plan needs to be possibly with the buyer of Lower Makefield System.
Correct. I think they need to, it needs to, we need to be clear about that if that's if that's the case.
Okay.
And and perhaps, I I guess, is there an expectation of when the sale is going to be final at this point?
Within a year or two. I I think the the overall thought was it's going to take a year for the Public Utility Commission to do its approval, but the process is starting. So I'm thinking by 2021. It may be complete. I can double check on something if you give me a few minutes.
Yeah, and I think maybe that comment should be refined just to say that, just to state the fact that Morrisville should be aware that Lower Makefield has entered into a contract to sell the sewer system to Aqua. And just leave it at that. I mean, so I think technically the Act 537 plan would still be Lower Makefield. It's just that our involvement is minimal because Aqua is the one servicing the area.
Right.
Sounds reasonable. I mean, I think we should address it in some way, and that sounds like a reasonable way of addressing it.
All right. How about just going back and say, update the language in the master plan, recommend updating the mass language of master plan to reflect the fact that a third party may own Lower Makefield Sewer System and just leave it at that and let them come up the language.
Yeah. Even better. Yeah, I I know while Barbara looks that up, I know my recollection was that they thought the sale of the sewer system could be finalized sometime in 2021. But I don't remember what that date was, whether it was June, August, September, December.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. Of course, I can't.
That's okay. I mean, Andy, if you want to keep going.
The next item concerns the land use planning areas. There's two areas that share a border with Lower Makefield Township, the riverfront. They want, they have some goals would be to focus on public riverwalk along the river and nominating gray stones to the National Register of Historic Places. Also in the north residential planning area, they they recommend exploring a merger of Morrisville School District with Pensbury and to consider developing bike facilities along East Trenton Avenue and Bridge Street.
As far as the Trenton Avenue corridor, just for everyone's benefit, there was a meeting held a couple of years ago, a joint meeting, I think by, it might have been PennDOT with Falls Township, Morrisville Borough, Lower Makefield Township representatives about the whole corridor along East Trenton Avenue and the possibility of trying to tie all that together with walkways and or bike lanes to create a more pedestrian-friendly corridor all through there. Lower Makefield just touches it a little bit. It's the area that you that's just north of East Trenton Avenue where my cursor is right now. And I think Falls Township skirts in and out of there, and Lower Makefield just touches it. We touch it just at the CVS and Tires Plus. That's the only part of Lower Makefield that touches Trenton Avenue. So a question about the the riverwalk, Andy, the riverfront walk, is it you're not talking about on the canal side, you're talking about on the other side of River Road along the water, correct?
Correct.
So in Lower Makefield, that's all private property right now, isn't it? Yes.
Yeah.
Or it's owned by, once you hit the Lower Makefield, it's then owned by Morrisville Water Treatment Plant, that area right at East Ferry. Right. And and then private property. Correct. So that concept, regardless of what you think about, the concept is a massive undertaking because it requires either easements or or condemnation of, or maybe not condemnation, eminent domain or something, some sort of taking of 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 people's property, which is probably pretty costly and probably not something that's going to happen anytime soon. Yeah, I think Morrisville's idea is that they'd like to have people be able to cross the Calhoun Street Bridge, go along some kind of walkway to the levee and walk along the levee, then get down to the other bridge. And then a little further on down, they do have some open space areas down along the river near the railroad and Philadelphia Avenue, and they have a dog park down there to try to just make the whole area a little bit nicer. Okay, I mean, that 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 sounds nice. I'm just saying, for in terms of coming up towards Lower Makefield, it doesn't really have any it's not a realistic idea coming into Lower Makefield with the same riverwalk. Correct.
Correct. The the final comment that we have is just the compatibility with adjacent plans. They their comprehensive plan acknowledges that medium-density residential and residential resource protection called out in Lower Makefield Township's 2019 comprehensive plan are consistent with their adjacent Morrisville land uses. So they acknowledge that, that things are consistent with what they're proposing on their on their side of the border. So that's all, that's all we had as far as comments.
Do any any board members have any comments about any sections of the plan that were not raised by Andy?
What what did we skip over 8B about the the Morrisville and Pensbury mergers and the the bike facilities? I'm not sure we discussed that in full.
Well, we skipped the merger.
Yeah, we skipped the merger. We did discuss the the Jim spoke about the the bike facilities and the what they want to do along those two corridors.
And did I, if I heard you correctly, this plan was also submitted to the Pensbury School District, correct? Or is that not the case?
I'd have to double check that.
I mean, I know there have been discussions in the past between Pensbury and Morrisville, so it wouldn't be a surprise to Pensbury that that is something that Morrisville is seeking. But you would think they would have given them a copy of the report and asked for their input as well.
Yeah, you would think, but I don't know that there's I'm I'm looking through the table of contents now to see if they have anything that indicates who who they issued this to. Jim, do you in the email that you received from Morrisville, the initial one that submitted it to you, is anybody from the school board copied on that email?
Not that I know of. The requirements of the municipality's planning code just say that it be submitted to the school district. I would presume that it just went to the Morrisville School District, not necessarily Pensbury.
Right.
But they could have submitted it there also.
Well, they'll have to talk eventually if they want that part of their plan to work.
Yeah. Yep. So it gets back to the question is, do we as a planning commission want to make any comment about that? Dawn, you you wanted to talk about this, or is this something you want to address?
Well, I mean, it was just there. I wasn't sure, you know, if it was if it was before the school board at this time, or like you say, I'm sure it's been discussed in the past, but as far as now, if they're on, if they're on notice or or not.
My my pers- my perspective on this is, I think generally what our township is doing, the more bike accessible, bike friendly and pedestrian friendly, we can make the area the better. So I generally generally conceptually support that idea. And as far as the school district merging, that's completely outside of our purview.
Anyone else have any other comments?
No, I agree with this. I think we hit the the important points as to how this plan or proposed plan could impact LMT with those minor comments. So I'm I'm good on mine.
Okay, from a from a practical standpoint, we need to make some sort of recommendation, which Barbara, have you been keeping track of where we are?
Yes. And before we do anything, let me just go over what I've made notes of. So number two, boat launch. Township would like some sort of signage at the law, at the launch to verify ownership of that section. Correct?
Well, or to just identify it as a boat launch.
And whether or not it's open to the public and who it's open to.
Yeah. See, I think I think the ownership of it and the who who who's has access to it, I think, are important points as well.
Okay. So it'd be signage at at launch for public, to identify public use, ownership, and just identify the area of the launch. And then under number four, for the Williamson Park Town conversion, comment was the issue of the effect to the township and loss of ball fields. Number six, Morrisville wastewater treatment plant plant, just a notation that reminder that the township is currently under a sale agreement to sell the system to Aqua. And any future Act 537 plan would need to involve the buyer of the township system. And then under 8B, bike facilities, just to indicate township supports the bike facilities. Those are the items that I specifically listed. I'm not sure if I've missed something.
Well, I I think Adrian's point, and I think a number of us talked about number four, is really more of an internal point about the loss of ball fields for for Lower Makefield.
Yeah.
Be cognizant of it and what it might mean in Lower Makefield.
I understand, and I just didn't know if you wanted to make that as a comment to Morrisville to offer a solution or just leave it.
How does everybody feel about that?
Nah, I I think, you know, we we, I don't necessarily think we should be telling them they need to tell us what they're doing with their ball fields. I think it is, I think it is more of an internal comment, like I would expect Jim maybe take this back to the Parks and Rec team and say, hey, this might be going on. Have we thought through what the potential impact is? Are there people down in Parks and Rec at Morrisville that we can be getting a hold of to make sure we're just in in lockstep, whatever the final outcome of this thing is going to be?
So if I can offer a suggestion, if I take in memo form or if I take and prepare a memo form, these recommendations by the township, but if I copy our supervisors and add the comment number four of the internal consideration of what and parks and copy and add the comment number four of the internal consideration of what and parks and copy, say, copy our supervisors and parks and recreation, then at least it's not sitting out there for us to all of a sudden have to consider once the the that that area has been developed and converted. Is that acceptable?
That that makes sense.
Okay.
That makes sense to me, too.
I what is, what is the downside of putting out there that that this might be a concern for the township having the ball fields um you know, overloaded?
I I don't think there is a concern by putting it out there. It was just, but it it's it's more helpful for us for and for Lower Makefield for future planning. But yeah, I think it it, there's no downside to it. I I would also think that for number four, we might want to say that they should be cognizant of traffic considerations.
Yeah, that's that's what I was gonna add on that. It would it be appropriate for us to just put a comment in there that any traffic studies that they do as they're developing this place should include um the Trenton Road and Yardley Morrisville Road and River Road traffic impact going north and west? I don't know.
Well, any development would have to have notification, I believe, to the township anyway.
Okay.
So I think if and when that occurs, it would be similar to what happened when we were reviewing the mixed use overlay district. The petitioning party had to notify Newtown and everybody had their right to to say something. So we, the township could actively make comments at that point.
Okay, that makes it, that makes sense.
So I guess out of those four items I just identified, do you want me to make reference to Morrisville about the effect of the loss of ball fields or just keep it internally to notify these, our supervisors and parks and recreation?
Uh, how does everybody feel about that? I mean, I I I'm with Dawn, I don't think there's any downside in doing it.
No, I don't, I don't think there's a downside, just let um, it's just sort of letting Morrisville know that, you know, at least it's a a an area of potential concern for Lower Makefield. And that we're recommending at least somebody take a look at that and understand it further.
Good.
Especially given the number of of participants who live in Lower Makefield.
And what I can do is if this is the direction that this board wants, I can prepare a proposed memo circulated among you with copies to Andy and Jim for any other comments that we could finalize and tweak before it's sent out.
If if we can do that offline, that's that's terrific.
Jim, any issues with that process, or do you want to do it?
Uh, the only thing is I think that would push us, that might push us past the forty five days.
When did we get this?
I don't recall, but that was the uh, right about the time of our last meeting. Uh, maybe November ninth or tenth. So we have, I guess we do have time before
Until December fifteenth roughly, right?
I believe you're correct.
Now, actually Meeting of the Board will be the sixteenth. For supervisors, in case you want the board to chime in.
So let's see, received November ninth. Forty five days. Thirty B would actually, we have longer than that. If it was received around this November ninth, thirty days would take us to December ninth, and another fifteen days would take us to almost December twenty fourth. So we can process this for the board consideration. Uh, meeting of um.
December sixteenth.
Sixteenth, yep. Is that a right for you, Jim?
It typically doesn't go to the Board of Supervisors unless you guys feel that it needs to. Uh, typically, they ask for the planning commissions to weigh in on that. But then after the, we could go to the next planning commission meeting, and then they could make their recommendation with the Board of Supervisors. And the Board of Supervisors can decide if they want to add anything onto that.
Okay. So our next meeting would be when?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Give me a second, I'll look.
I think ours is on the fourteenth.
Is it?
Monday, the fourteenth would be the next meeting.
Okay.
Correct, December fourteenth.
All right. So how about if I draft up something circulated to everybody so that they can then come back with their comments? And we'll have something ready for December fourteenth um for review and consideration.
Sounds like a good plan.
Makes sense to me.
Fine.
Agreed.
Um, before we move on, are there, um, was there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Okay. Does anybody have any other business? Other than scheduling our next meeting on December fourteenth, right, Jim?
Correct. No other business on my end.
Pardon?
No other business on my end.
Okay.
Uh, can I ask a quick question, just thinking ahead with the holidays coming up? Would December fourteenth be our final meeting of the year, or would we meet on the twenty eighth or so?
Uh, that'll be our final meeting for the year.
Great. Um, someone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm going to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Nice.
Hi.
We're adjourned.
See you everybody. Bye, everybody.
Good night, good night.
All right.